Samantha Spalding, President called this work session to order under the Open Public Meetings Act at 6:02 PM. This is revised and general public and so instructed to be reported in the minutes that in the compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Schools of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act, the Runnymede Board of Education calls to be posted at the Bower Hall, Runnymede Post Office, Maryburg School, Lime Bingham School, and Grace Downing School, and advertising the retrospect day meeting notice set forth the time, date, and location of this meeting. Roll call, board members.
Tricia Dairs absent. Angel Bebe here. Charles Buckhine.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson here. Maria Tansarella absent. Patricia Smith here. Samantha Spalding.
Here.
Lynn Charolla here. And John Morton absent. Five present, three absent. I'm sorry, six present, three absent.
Alright, thank you. And this evening.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say, one thing's come up next with Dr. McCarron is 20% of the Q-SAC corrective action plan has to be submitted October 1st, which is next Tuesday, but I have it by the week, which is going to be forward tomorrow. This evening, I'll submit tomorrow and forward to the county. So we're just going to not only present the Q-SAC corrective action plan, where a lot of things were lacking points, part of their curriculum, so we'll talk a little bit about that today. We also can give you a little, I guess, an enhanced version, short, about the New Jersey S-Force of Mr.
You didn't miss it?
Yes.
And then I just want to turn right back.
First I want to present is the district improvement plan, which needs to be done anytime when the state comes in. And that would be the county office, they come in and they will get schools in five different areas. Instruction and program, fiscal management, governance, operations, and personnel. These are your county office employees who come in and they review each of these areas. During a scheduled visit, they evaluated Runnymede School District in those five areas, and the district needed to score an 80% or higher in each of those areas to pass the Q-SAC. The results, they came in last year, and that was during the 12-13 school year. When they come in, they're looking for information from the year prior. So they would be working with the previous administration to get that information. In instruction and program, out of 100%, the district scored themselves in the 60s, Runnymede received a 28%. The main reason why it received a 28% was because of the fact that the curriculum was not fully updated and aligned to the Common Core standards. Last month, the board had approved the revised curriculum, which everything is currently posted, revised, and has already been given to staff members. So part of our corrective action plan, what happens in curriculum and instruction, is the fact that if your curriculum's not updated, when it said our administrators going through and providing feedback on walkthroughs and observations based on the curriculum. We gave ourselves a 1 because they currently had an observation model in place and they were doing that. The county gave a 0 because we didn't have a curriculum in place. We had a curriculum, but not a revised and updated curriculum based on the Common Core standards and core curriculum content. So a lot of these areas under curriculum and instruction, it was a domino effect. The fact that that one thing was not in place trickled down to every other area that they were supporting on that rubric because the curriculum was not fully aligned. Fiscal management received a 90%, governance a 74%, and there were two areas that were deficient under governance, which have already actually been addressed as of last year. But as I said, this was looking at the 11-12 school year. Operations and personnel. Operations was 95, personnel was 100%.
Sure, what were the two areas in the governance that were?
I'm gonna go into each of those.
Oh, okay, thank you.
No problem. The district was required to create the district improvement plan for any area that was below an 80%, which was governance and instruction and program. And what we had to do was say, who's gonna be responsible? What are we gonna do to remediate the problem, and what actions are being put in place? So in instruction and program, the big thing, because there were 18 areas, but everything kind of came back to the fact that the curriculum wasn't aligned. All district curriculum needs to be aligned within all content areas. That's currently in place within the Runnymede School District as of today. All grade level data, 3 through 8, are analyzed and presented. When I present the data to you this evening, one of the things that they noted was that we only disaggregated the data by looking at the special education population. Looking at our demographics, what I did was I took it further and we looked at also male, female, to kind of disaggregate it and break the data down a little bit further within each grade level and within each subject. All subgroups are identified when analyzing data. Strengthen benchmarks within non-tested areas. This is currently being addressed as teachers are creating their student growth objectives. Because teachers must have a pre-impose assessment that they're measuring student growth for. Many times, teachers already had this in place, but it wasn't necessarily put down as formally as it is now with their student growth objectives that they are creating. And then finally, provide feedback on lesson plans frequently. And what they were looking for was, a lot of times it might be lesson plans were checked, it might be a question or two about what was being taught. They want more specific information when lesson plans are being checked in regards to how are you analyzing data? How are you assessing your students? And more in-depth conversations between staff and administration when checking lesson plan.
A question.
Yes.
Who in the district will be checking the lesson plans each week? I guess, are teachers submit lesson plans?
Teachers submit lesson plans.
On Friday for the coming week?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday morning?
Yeah.
For that week, okay. And then who reviews them to make these comments?
It would be the building administrators, myself, Mark. It could be Lori Hines. Anyone who's supervising the staff members would be checking. As we're doing walkthroughs currently and doing observations, part of going in for a walkthrough and operation, we'll be looking at lesson plans as well on top of that to see what's going on in the classroom so we have a good idea of what we would be doing at that time.
When does that semester submit on Monday? Who are they going to?
The principal.
The principal.
It's all in the student management system, so what was happening last year, like I would make comments to the lesson plans, but the comments that I was making didn't fit the criteria, I think, that the county was looking for. So I know, you don't have that on the slide, right? Like the comments were.
One of the things that we did was we put together a whole list of comments. Comments that deal with data, comments that deal with analyzing data and the assessments that we have. Comments with classroom instruction and grouping. So that way, we have a list of different suggestions, kind of like you would see for when giving a student report card, and you have your general comments that would go on first student report card, kind of to build our rapport of what we're saying to teachers when we review their lesson plans. So that's something that we've also looked at to try to address that need for the county.
It's not like, I don't know, my first administration, you were still collecting paperwork, and you'd just write "okay" or "thank you", you know what I'm saying? Or you'd write a little "learned now", it's a little more scripted, a little more things that are paying attention to the staff.
Okay, thank you.
And in governance, it was the chief school administrator evaluation needed to be in place when they looked for that school year. That's something that we currently have in place and that was done last year. And it's usually done at the end of each year where you would evaluate the chief school administrator. That's currently in place, but they didn't have that document for that school year when they looked for that. Alignment of fiscal and budgetary goals.
What, where was that given issue? If it was a conflict?
It wasn't in, they weren't able to produce it.
They weren't be, they weren't able to get it from a file.
Well, they were here, they were here for that.
Couple days.
Couple days. They couldn't produce that document, that was last February.
That was from the.
I'm also, I'm also like at a loss for words, because I remember you and I and other, we remember sitting with curriculum and the old ministry people talking about curriculum, at least three meetings we had.
Yes, and not only that, but also the evaluation process, I had to send it to you snail mail.
Yep.
I had to write one.
We wrote it out and we did everything we were supposed to do.
So it wasn't this last one?
It would've been the year before.
But the only, there was one for 11, there was one for 12, it was the 11-12 one that had.
So we're talking about 11-12, not the snail mail. That's 12-13. We all, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Not so funny. And then alignment of fiscal and budgetary goals with the school-based budget. We actually lost points in this area because the curriculum was not aligned. So therefore, they were saying, well, how are you making these budgetary decisions if you don't have a curriculum aligned with the standards? So from curriculum and instruction losing points, it then also took points away from your governance as well. Yes?
The core standards weren't all together at that point, right?
Whatever the most current ones are. So for example, we're still using New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards 2009 when it comes to like social studies and 21st century life, skills and careers. However, we are using Common Core standards when it comes to English Language Arts and Mathematics. So all those things had to have been lined up and fully there. World language needed to have a full curriculum in place. Other areas, we needed to make sure that all the curriculum pieces were there, K through 8.
Did it get messed up because there was such changes with all the things coming down? You think other schools are having the same issues?
Honestly, honest answer.
I think certain things were there and certain things weren't there, to be honest with you. Coming in, we were looking at, through a lot of stuff. We were able to find some things very easily, but then there were chunks of documents that were needed that weren't there.
We're just like speaking as board members, so you'll just have to like bear with us.
No, that's fine.
Like as board members.
There were pieces of the curriculum that weren't there.
We have to get, yeah, we have to get together as board members and we have to do an individual piece. And we know that, I can't say 100% of us did, but I can say 90% of us didn't. So then we submit it, right? And then I know that we had, we used to work in committees, and we had a curriculum committee, and we met like at least three times, and we're told that everything was in place. So when we see like a 27%, that's why you see Ms. Davidson's face looking like that. Because I didn't see yours, Ms. Charolla, but like, that's like appalling to us as Board of Education. Because we do everything we're supposed to do, and we volunteer our time, and we, we're on committees and different things, and we're thinking, and everything is.
Well, maybe to justify this, because it wasn't 100% completed, that you were finding bits and pieces of things, that that's why it failed to meet the standards.
So for example, we weren't even.
But it didn't just fail to meet the standards, Ms. Davidson, it was a 27%.
I think like he said, a lot of the stuff had to be, when you look at the Q-SAC breakdown, if you don't have it in one area, it's a triple that.
Right.
It hits you seven.
I get it, I get it.
Under curriculum instruction, I think there were 18 areas that we weren't complying out of the 20-some-odd areas that were possibly there. Majority of those areas might have had nothing specifically to do with, but curriculum was one small part of it, therefore it's counted as a 0.
But I, yeah, I get it. The curriculum is a reason why we're here.
Absolutely.
And you know, that's just disgusting.
And another plus for the fact that you.
Has not been carried, yes.
Based on what, where we're at now with our curriculum, do you feel we have a strong opportunity to get 80% or better next year when we do this process in the areas where we visited?
I feel very good that it could absolutely go above 80%. I feel very good that teachers now have the documents in their hands and accessible to them very readily. And I will say that staff has been extremely receptive for me as a new administrator coming in, and like willing and wanting to learn and take things and take ideas. And it's been, I absolutely think that things have been changing. Also, at the county office, as people change, it depends on what they're looking at. So although you might go through Q-SAC evaluation on a yearly basis, it depends on how in-depth are they going through your curriculum guides? Are they actually looking through every single grade level, every single subject of each of the areas that need to have guides in place?
I think the team that came last year was, there was probably three or four new members compared to what became, just like the. So it changed up a lot, right, some of it.
And we understand all of that, and people change and people move, but would you accept the 27%?
I definitely don't.
Yeah, not after all the.
Sorry, we're just venting out now, not at you, obviously, that's what I'm hearing.
Was the information management wasn't available?
Well, that's what they're saying about the CSA, but no, that our curriculum was not aligned to standards. And we had an administrator in charge of curriculum, so.
We do now, but we didn't do.
Yes, we do.
Well, we have, he wasn't really comfortable in that position.
But that's what he was hired to do.
Well, sure, that's.
So currently, that's all now set up. It's readily available. We have it posted, we have it given to staff members. We have staff members reviewing it, starting in October. I'll be working with staff members to discuss each of the areas. For Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, all the curricular areas that we have, to see where revisions are needed. Because really, you want those curriculums to be a living, breathing document, not just something that is there because we have to have it there, but something that they can actually utilize and that, you know, we're continually updating and revising as we see that need in place. Okay? Actions. Some of the actions that we had to take as far as the action plan's concerned, and as I said, there were a number of areas that had to be addressed. So what I tried to do was take each of the common themes and kind of pull them all together for this presentation. Align all curriculum to content areas. Complete review and analysis of all data that's available. Strengthen feedback to staff members regarding their planning. And then finally, work with New Jersey School Words Association, which we've already done, who can achieve school administrator evaluation, plan to be given, plan to be given, I apologize, in the spring months. Questions or comments regarding the district improvement plan?
Quick question.
Yes.
Can we just get that last one still?
No problem.
Right here, we put a complete review and analysis of all data, and a strengthened feedback to staff members regarding their planning. Is there a way to get back to us and let us know how we're doing with these improvements?
One of the things, as far as data's concerned, tonight, right next, I'll be doing the New Jersey S. We're currently in the process. We've done our first full week. Will we finish up this week with math testing, and we'll be math testing next week as well. We'll also be approving tonight for October 15th.
15?
Is going to be a parent night. I'm gonna host one during the daytime in the library, one in the evening in the gymnasium, same presentation two times. So that way, parents are available during the daytime, they can attend in the night. But through review of math scores, in that flyer, we'll also recommend that they even bring their New Jersey S-Force. Something different that we have the teachers doing this year is that in the past, you get two copies of New Jersey S-Force, one that gets mailed home, and one that goes in the student files. Instead of putting them directly in the student files, we put them in the teacher's hand, because it actually gives an individualized breakdown for each student. During team meetings, we worked with staff members and we spoke to them about having conversations with their students about goal setting. Looking at their test scores, seeing where their strengths are, seeing where their weaknesses are. Making plans and goals for how they're going to improve their academic year in that class. And that way, they can actually see where they were really strong and maybe where they need to show more attention. Hearing from teachers, because that was about two weeks ago that we started that, kids are already making comments as they go into writing assignments. Oh, Mrs. Stone spoke to me about my writing, and he told me what to do differently. Fifth grade class and then a fourth grade class as well. We have a lot of grade assessments in place, but I think what we really need to do at this point is fully utilize those assessments and use that to drive our instruction 100% in terms of what we're doing. As teachers create their student growth objectives, which is new for them this year, they're actually creating their pre-impose assessments. They are each creating two student growth objectives, so that's two separate assessments that they need to use. Teachers are not allowed to use New Jersey S-Force as a part of their student growth assessment, student growth objectives. They have to use other assessments, whether they be model curriculum assessments, whether they be ones that they create on their own that have a rubric attached to it. But we're definitely, that's how we're looking at all those pieces. That answer? Was that not the next year?
Yeah. The powerpoint, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
All the way to back.
Right.
But that's okay.
My, well, it's kind of good with the next thing. I was just telling Mark like that I put my kindergarten box of stuff that I see for my son like away. So other parents may have done it, or may have thrown them out. The math scores, are you sending home new ones from the spring or some from the fall?
What we're actually doing is, as soon as the math testing is done next week, we will be printing them out. And we'll be sending home those math scores for the fall.
The flyer will be.
The flyer is going to be attached on top as it's sent home. And then we can speak with the office just in case a parent doesn't have the math results. So that way, we can print them out for the parent at that time. But apparently, to bring that flyer and to bring the math scores, so that way we can kind of go through each of that, and then provide parents with resources that are available for their students.
He'll give her a Ritz form in the spring on that piece of paper.
If the student has previous scores, it should show up on the scores that are printed out from this year.
Right, 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 I didn't do that before, here, okay.
Okay. Any other questions on the district improvement plan?
You know, just to go back to the, this CSA eval, there was one, one year, no wonder. There was one year when things went crazy, and we did do an eval at a retreat or something, one year, but that was.
Naomi just asked me the same thing, so I think that was two years ago.
Yeah, that was.
You think it was three years ago?
Yes.
I know. That just, that CSA evaluation's just gonna drive us.
That is, that's gonna drive.
Because we did it. Because we do it every, we do it every year.
And the thing is, if it's not present, when they're here, that's how it works.
We'll make sure it's present.
One of the things that you're approving tonight is stating the shorts, which each year we go through each of the areas for Q-SAC, and we say whether or not we have it. So this year, we rate ourselves at 100% because our curriculum's aligned, we're analyzing test scores, we're analyzing data. And then when they come in, they'll take our scores, and they'll compare it to what they find. So it's making sure that everything's organized and readily available for when they do come, and just making sure they've got everything filed that way for them at that time. Okay? Any other questions with the district improvement plan? New Jersey S-Force, we discussed at the board retreat in August. I presented the preliminary scores and showed year by year. In this one, what I'm gonna be showing is, we have a comparison with the district factor group, and also the different areas where students need to show improvement in growth and specific areas, which has already been shared with teachers. And teachers have received this information broken down by individual student, so they can then plan instruction around that information. Couple definitions, partially proficient, students who scored 200. Students who scored below 200 on a specific section. Proficient, students who scored between 200 and 249. Advanced proficient, is anyone who scored 250 or above. The test goes as high as 300. In some areas, students receive advanced proficiency. We do have students in the district who received a perfect 300 score on certain sections of the New Jersey S. If you see other, that would be students who took the APA assessment, were not present, or had a medical emergency. In those situations, the test has to be completely avoided, depending on the section that they're in at that time. Just as an overview from where we saw before, this shows you third grade Bingham, third grade Downing, 4 through 8, where each student fell partially proficient, proficient, or advanced for Language Arts. You then have the chart, which breaks it down a little bit better. In blue, you see proficient, in green, you see advanced proficient. In the, it's supposed to be a light pink, you would see the partially proficient areas. So in Language Arts, what you see is that students start at partially proficient in third grade in the 60% title, where 60% of your students are receiving a below a 200 score. But as you go all the way down to eighth grade, you can see that that score decreases. By eighth grade, you only have 18% of your students in the grade level receiving partial proficiency. So as years go on, it'll show you that the students are becoming more and more proficient each year, and that the proficiency level, the blue and the green, is increasing from third grade, where it's much lower, all the way to eighth grade. Questions on? In mathematics, here's a breakdown for each grade level with partially proficient, proficient, and advanced for math. In math, we're using everyday math up until sixth grade. In seventh grade, they moved to Pearson's Algebra readiness. And then in eighth grade, they're actually using a Larson's Algebra book, which they use at Black Horse Pike Regional. And here, our math scores are much higher. But as you can see, the amount of students who become partially proficient increases greatly in eighth grade. The material that's used in eighth grade is much more difficult. So although it might be shown that they aren't as proficient on the New Jersey S, we are truly preparing our students much more for math when they go to the high school, and possibly even giving them better opportunities when they go to the high school, depending on where they're placed in their schedules and how they perform on various assessments they're given before they leave Runnymede, before our district.
Because they're using, in essence, they're using the same exact book in ninth grade, everybody.
Yes.
Because there is nothing less than Algebra 1 now in ninth grade, in high school. So they, this is like a prerequisite, so it's, and it's hard. So that's probably why they're like that.
And then hopefully, once our students go to the high school, they have much more success in mathematics because they've been exposed to.
They also have been, if they're having a double, if they're, if they weren't proficient in the S, they're having a math. Like if they're not proficient in English, they come to May. It's a reading, and it's an English one and a reading enhancement, double period. This year's the first we, if they weren't, so say they weren't proficient in reading and math, they're getting two periods of English at that and two periods of math. They're not getting any electives their first year in high school to try and raise that, to try and rate, in ninth grade. That's something new this year, and they're doing it in both areas. So 47% of our eighth graders, if they came to Drayton, are in that double math period. So it's just giving them that much more time, five more periods a week of math to get them where they need to be.
And then like Language Arts, who have 18%, were receiving additional language. And one of the things we are trying to do is communicate with the curriculum department over at Black Horse Pike to see if there's any collaboration that we can have, whether it be math program, Language Arts, and try to have that cross-curricular conversation.
Sure, what textbooks are they using for eighth grade and for math?
For math in eighth grade, they're using Larson's Algebra.
Thank you.
And that's the same book that they're using? Okay, the next slides you haven't seen, those cat slides were presented previously. In the upcoming slides, DFG is the district factor group. Runnymede School District is factor group A. This compares our scores with schools that have similar demographics. In the state of New Jersey, there are 78 schools that fall under the DFG group A. In speaking to an educational specialist from another county, she said that this number is coming from 2000, where they actually identified the district factor groups. They did not recalculate district factor groups in 2010 when the census was taken again. So this hasn't been updated since.
Did she give you a reason why?
They just didn't.
There's no good answer. So this is based on 2000, okay? In Camden County, just so you're aware, the district factor groups A that are B's would be Bellmark, Oaklawn, Cunyton, Lobster City, Longside, Lincoln Wells, Prime Health, and Woodland. Subgroups, the other area that I'll be discussing, are students who are classified within a specific category. More than 10 students is what I looked at within each grade level. So that would be total population, special education, economically disadvantaged, male, and female. In the district improvement plan, they said that we only look at total population and special education. So that's why we've added the other areas this year. And that way, when they come to review us again, we'll have this presentation readily available for them. So that way, they can see that was presented in other ways other than total population and special education. In third grade, our current fourth grade students. In English Language Arts, they were below the district factor group in all subgroups. So all the subgroups that are listed, in third grade, they were below in all subgroups. The areas that they say we need to focus on in third grade are writing, narrative, reading, and informational text. We're current, and when you see what we have in place, we are currently, that's what we're working towards, and all the things that we currently have in place to work with students in those areas. In mathematics, we were below district factor group with our economically disadvantaged population. That's plus five students who receive free or reduced lunch that we report to them by October 15th each year, and then it's scanned with their test scores that they hate. Areas we need to focus is number and operation and base ten. For fourth grade, our current fifth grade students. In English Language Arts, we were below the district factor group in the female subgroup. In areas that we need to improve, it would be writing, informative, explanatory, and narrative, which was all writing sections. In mathematics, we are below the district factor group in special education and female. Areas we need to focus in fourth grade math would be geometry. For science, we were not below any of the district factor group, we were actually above in all of our subgroups in the area of science. For fifth grade, our current sixth grade students. In English, we were below the district factor group in economically disadvantaged subgroup. Areas that we need to focus are writing, narrative, reading, and informational text. In mathematics, we were below district factor group in total economically disadvantaged male and female. Area we need to focus is measurement and data and geometry. For sixth grade students, our current seventh grade, in English, language arts, we were above district factor group in all subgroups. There were no areas identified that we needed to focus. In mathematics, we were above district factor group in all subgroups. Areas we need to focus was geometry and measurement. You might be asking why there's an area we need to focus? That might mean that we were so far above in one area, below in another, it averages itself out where the students got overall end score that put them above everyone else. So that's why there is an area that needs to be focused on as we look at this instruction. In seventh grade, our current eighth grade students, we were above district factor group in language arts in all subgroups. No areas were identified. Same exact thing for math, above district factor group, no areas identified. In eighth grade, we were above district factor group in all areas and no areas were identified for us to focus. In mathematics, we were below district factor group in total population, economically disadvantaged, male, and female. Areas to focus, number and numerical operations, geometry and measurement, patterns in algebra, and problem solving. And as we said, it's a different curriculum that they're following after using everyday math from kindergarten through eighth grade. Thirteen fourteen action plan in English, language arts. Continue implementation of L L I and the daily five. The daily five is now being fully implemented in the pre-k through kindergarten through third grade buildings. It's also being implemented at the middle school on a revised, usually it's like the daily three that they're following within their classes. Resigned R T I model with Bingham and Downing and we're beginning implementation of R T I at Bowles. That's where we actually use the data and we identify students who need additional support. And the teachers who we have pushing in work specifically with those identified students. If we see that they're really struggling, as Samantha was saying earlier, we give them additional support outside of the language arts period on top of supplementing what they're getting, not supplanting it, and making sure that they're getting that additional support in that area. But with R T I, it's eight-week periods. So as a data team, we are meeting every eight weeks to discuss where the students are, what skills were we working on, was any progress shown? And then they will work their way through the tiers, either up or possibly out of the tiers altogether, which is what the goal of that process is. Designated intervention specialists in each building, which would be in Bingham, Downing, and then we also have here at Bowles as well. Educational consultants provide support and professional development, which is part of our sign, that's Julie Al. Utilize TeachGape Focus, which is our walkthrough and observation tool to drive instruction and professional development. Walkthroughs have started, the majority of all teachers have received walkthroughs already. Observations are starting in October. All administrators will be dealing a minimum of two joint walkthroughs, which was recommended, but it's now mandatory by the state, which means I might go in with Mark when he's observing Samantha. I might just be doing a blank observation form, Mark's doing Samantha's actual observation. We then leave, we discuss, what is it I saw, what did Mark state, are there any differences or discrepancies? It's kind of like the checks and balances, but that's to ensure that we're all looking for the same things as we go in for our observations.
Question?
Yes.
All the walkthroughs, have you developed some kind of a checklist so that no matter what administrator is going in, they're looking at the same types of things so that teachers can, it's just a feedback, it's not a whole other place?
Absolutely, that's actually part of our TeachGape form that we use. There's a walkthrough form and an observation. What they actually do for the walkthrough form is they take all the areas of Charlotte Danielson's four domains, which is the rubric that we're using. And what it allows us to do is allow us to go in and we're looking for research-based strategies that are being used in the classroom and it's only a five-minute blitz.
Yeah.
So you're marking off what the students are doing that are showing research-based strategies. You're marking off what the teacher is doing that's research-based strategies. It then gives you a narrative part where you're able to then comment, ask questions, or make suggestions for that teacher. One of the things we tell the teachers is that the walkthrough is not an evaluative, but I will tell the teachers it then becomes evaluative when I come in to do your observation. If something's marked in the walkthrough, you know what I'm looking for. It lets them know exactly what we're looking for in terms of best instructional practices and allows them that opportunity before we actually conduct an observation.
If it's possible, I'd love to see a copy of that for you.
I can pull one up for you before we leave the seat.
Okay.
Sean, can you tell me who the designated intervention specialists are in each building?
That's, in one building, we have Mary Ross, in the other building, we have Barbara Fans. We then have basic skills teachers, but they're really doing intervention for the students in each building. Then we have Mary Kay and Jennifer Raffigan. And Peggy Law for math between Bingham and Downing. Okay. Also reviewing lesson plans to ensure alignment with the curriculum and that the curriculum is being followed. Weekly times are designated now for grade level meetings, where we've been discussing data, student growth objectives. Minutes are being kept at each of these meetings, assigning sheet, minutes, areas to focus. At the end of the week, I've been in the majority of the meetings, however, at the end of the week, all the minutes come to May. We've been scanning the minutes in and posting it on a district drive for teachers so they can actually look to see what other grade levels are talking about and allows them a different opportunity to see what's going on in the other grade levels as well.
That's another thing you said, okay.
Meeting minutes, professional development, all of that stuff. In terms of mathematics, students will receive an extra forty-five minutes of mathematics weekly in grades four through eight with one extra block of math. We're utilizing TeachGape Focus again to drive instruction and professional development as we are in all subject areas. We're reviewing lesson plans to ensure alignment with curriculum and weekly times are designated for grade level meetings to ensure that we're following the curriculum that's been designated.
Also for that, they also have cross, I call it partitulation, for the different grade levels for math, line of course, things like that. They have it out roughly once a month. Usually if someone's camping in services, we'll have, get like two hours, we kind of have the sixth grade math teacher, eighth grade math teacher. So they, you know, all on the same page.
Whether it be going to an extra school grade level meeting, and one thing that we're doing at, that Jane will be doing at her next faculty meeting is we're actually breaking off by grade level so that way teachers from Bingham and teachers from Downing are able to collaborate and have discussions on grade level topics during that time period, so that way their time is fully being utilized to the best possible. Any questions for?
Sean, there are weekly times designated for grade level meetings.
Yes.
Is there a specific agenda or is it based upon, you know, what's going on within the curriculum you're teaching, how this?
Ideally, right now, the weekly times designated for grade level meetings, the agenda's being set by administration.
Okay.
The goal though would be, as you talk about professional learning community, is that you then put more ownership on the teachers. So what you want to do is we're setting the agenda so that way the teachers can see where we're going with things. In my, where I was previously, it worked out really well and then you would assign a different teacher to kind of plan what they were gonna be doing, or you would ask for what the hot topics were that the teachers would then provide you with and be responsible for bringing things to review and discuss. But at least now, it's designated for each grade level. For special areas, we are meeting on a weekly basis. It's difficult with the lower grades because they're in two separate, not weekly, monthly basis, I apologize. But it's difficult because they're on opposite schedules depending on what grade levels they're serving at the designated time. But we are meeting with them on a monthly basis, that conversation, that concern they have, and to go over anything with them that we went over with the other teachers.
Thank you, Dr. McCarron, for, for presenting to us this evening and, you know, it has been a board goal for, for, you know, even if it wasn't written down officially, to have this math score review that you're going to be doing on October fifteenth in the day and in the evening. So if there's anything that we can do or anything you need, please let us know. Thank you. All right, the number four. Joanne, do you have anything to add about the workshop and the convention?
The only thing I did was I distributed to those of you that I signed you up for the mandatory training that you're set to do because you can actually have this workshop attend whatever mandatory training you have to do for two thousand thirteen. So I went ahead and did that for those of you who are required to have one of those courses. And I highlighted which one it was and gave you a paper.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Um, okay.
These are the same ones we talked about in the afternoon, I assume?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, because Joanne had already set us up for that. So at this time, I just want to quickly look through the revised agenda with all of you, see if there's any questions or concerns. So we'll start with A, property and transportation. So I see that since our agenda was delivered to us this weekend, we did get quotes for sports transportation?
For those, for those dates.
Just for those dates?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is kind of a logistical thing?
Yes.
Time to get these sports?
No, these things, plus companies cut a lot down sports. Sometimes the games should start a little later.
Is it, is it time for us as a board to revisit the possibility of our own transportation in this, if this is gonna be?
For the leg events?
Well, for any events, for any, for kids going to, just maybe.
Battle of the books and things like that?
Yes, yes, battle of the books, thank you.
The good thing is we do have that arrangement still with Black Horse Pike where they charge us fifty dollars.
Okay.
You can't make that.
No, absolutely not.
It's one of the busing with the sports.
Can they not do that? Or they're not eligible to do that, Joanne?
What's that?
Like, could we reach out to a shared, maybe look into a shared service?
I did reach out to Black Horse Pike, they weren't able to, and that was, I think, too, because of their buses and their, and their staff was out.
Staff, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Something we probably should put in, you know, think.
Yeah, just in the future.
Yeah, in the future, yeah, absolutely, for sure. Dr. McCarron, I see here that on ten fifteen, you have six to seven thirty P M. Do you have any idea what time you're going to do that during the day as well?
I was probably shooting, I needed to see what time the library was completely free.
Okay, that's fine.
I would say, you know, probably around eleven-ish would probably be the time that I was gonna aim for.
Okay.
If you have any other suggestions?
No, 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 I was just gonna add it for, for my own, okay, that's great, all right. Any other questions on their property and transportation?
That's not a good idea, too.
An easy how to.
Right.
Interpret your job, of course.
That was a good idea. So there's a few field trips as well. Any questions now? All right, so then we'll move to personnel. We have items number one through eleven to fourteen were added. Fourteen, I have a question on fourteen. Was that to replace the?
I have a question. Number eleven. Was that done based on the new means of purchase? Well, I see the boys asking about purchase definition.
Yeah, they also, they...
I remember, that's what it was.
Have people submitted any?
Awesome.
You also had volunteers in place for soccer?
Volunteers for hockey and soccer, yes, they've actually, you know, been helping out.
That in hopes that the extra funds we were saving may end up in a sliver for them?
Possibly, yes, in the future, yeah, eager to do it. Great, because you turn out to be a soccer and a hockey student for these three schools.
There wasn't definitely need.
Questionable, questionable volunteers, are they in-house?
Teachers, yeah.
Okay, my question then was going to be if they're not, you mean it was sort of background check?
We did last year, we did have a volunteer last year in the background.
That's a statement, that's a statement.
Yeah?
We're also doing your concussion, concussion training, which many of my fans, that's basically sort of what Mark.
So there's no questions on their finance, there was just one date that was changed because Mrs. Wilson wasn't going to be at the workshop for a few months. The date was wrong and there's a few added.
Mr. Wiggles' place is the only administrator that wasn't officially trained in the basis and model of TeachGape, so that's why this is termed the E I R C program, which is actually the same presenter that we went to two summers ago.
I have a question about the autism conference. Will those teachers be able to present to, upturn key on that conference?
Where are you?
On professional development, Jennifer Majewski and Ms. Wes Carver?
White Carver?
White Carver.
Absolutely, and one of the things you just talked about, for grade level applications, things like that, share that information. I think there are more than one, four or two people interested in signing up.
That's good, that's great, okay, thank you.
And then number six through ten were added on the back, on page nine.
It's great that our extraordinary aid came in that night. Would you like to explain how that's broken down?
Extraordinary, it's an application that was actually done in the middle of, that I did in the middle of last year and it's based on your out-of-district placements and the state will give you a certain amount of money based on whether it's an out-of-district placement that's in like a special service school district versus a private school. And the thresholds that you have to exceed in order to meet the, the qualifications to get this additional aid is higher when you have the placement in a private school versus in a, either in your local, in your own district or the specials, the special services and school district versus the highest threshold is the private school. So you have to exceed a much higher dollar amount for the cost of their special ed program, which could be tuition as, as well as any additional extraordinary services such as a one-on-one aid. So you gotta get all that information together and put it together in their charts that they have and submit this application and based on how many people fall into these different areas and the thresholds that they have to meet, you can wind up with some additional help when it comes to your special ed costs.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your...
Any other questions? Under curriculum, it looks like we're just approving the action plan that you reviewed with us this evening. That's the statement of assurance, that's number one, okay. The district improvement plan and...
Statement of assurance is for the upcoming school year, saying that we have everything in place that's needed.
Okay.
And that is the district improvement plan, which is what we went over.
Right, okay. And we, policy and public relations, they're just putting, what are we doing? We're just adding dates there? Some things that are happening?
We're trying to get some things just to get improved for the day or week before they actually happen.
And this evening, we will be going into executive session, we have the partners. I don't want to be ignorant, but I have Darliece and Perry, because there's no way I could say, I could say Gutiérrez, but I can't say your last name, so. I'll, I'll try, and I'm sorry.
Sherry Adams.
Sherry Adams with us this evening to talk to us in, during executive session.
Action board, the board goals, our superintendent's report, the board goals, and the rest of our school reports. I submitted them to Terry Lewis, she gave some feedback back, that's why I gave you one spreadsheet for the board goals and district goals.
So you've submitted them to the...
School board.
School boards, Harry Lewis, and?
She made the feedback.
And you, and you changed them?
Yes.
According to her feedback?
Yes.
And you submitted these to the county? After we approved? After we approved them?
After tonight's meeting.
After tonight's meeting?
Not it.
Yeah. Where are the, is that on our agenda?
Yeah, it's under superintendent.
Under the, okay, but do we need a motion to approve them? Yeah. Where would we probably put that? Policy? Yeah. So number six, and we would add approved district goals, district and board goals. Okay, Joanne, is that okay? So I'm going to put number one to six. Two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen. Okay, any other questions issued before we adjourn to read before our regular meeting? No?
I have a question, I know, I don't want to just bring this up on the craziness, but I know we discussed before about safety issues that's applied at the lower elementary schools again, and I will go over to you to address this with Missy or with you as well. It's, I don't know how the duty schedule is working. Um, it's not working with Downing. There was an incident on Friday where a child went up those grand steps at Downing School onto one of those landings and attempted to jump from there to reach a tree branch. He fell.
A Downing student?
No, a Nebo student.
Nebo students come up and hang there.
Right, I, I, that's why I was asking, so I know students, the duty schedule is in place, but at dismissal time, so if the Nebo students are arriving prior to, at an instructional day, you know, those staff members are still teaching or still with students, so that is still an ongoing issue that I know has been happening throughout the years. Um, I, I just, my question is, how many staff members are on duty at the end of the day?
Okay.
And where are they posted? Okay.
And I can give you a schedule, I mean, that's outlined at both schools, but that starts at three P M. So if anything that's happening prior to that, those teachers are still with the Downing students.
Is there anyone who has like a, an eighth period, I don't know what, eighth, ninth, I don't know what you're guys calling it, duty, like duty?
I mean?
That could be out there a little earlier.
I'm maximizing instructional time for the, you know, for the hours that the students are there.
As you should be, exactly.
Um, but when, you know, things surface, we revisit and we try and problem solve, so I'll definitely check that out for you.
Just please do.
And they're coming up to pick up little brothers and little sisters and, and, and they're not supervised.
Right, exactly.
So when, when we go to pick up our children or grandchildren, they're, it's just a cluster of students on that busy, awkward corner there.
Right, so I'll check, I'll check that out. Like I said, though, nobody has free time.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, that's the hard part.
My, my biggest thing was, I mean, I know we talked to Mark about this before, there was hopefully going to be some type of schedule set up where?
Right.
There was going to be teachers on duty at the end of the day to try to solve this problem, and it has not been solved.
And when that happened to that child, I'm like, oh my goodness, here we go.
He fell on his.
And there, and to be quite honest with you, there's been a couple instances, you know, so, um, like I said, I'll, I'll check out the schedule and I'll see what we can do and?
Right, isn't there any way to know? I, I mean, I know this is, this is like a burden on Mr. Peeling to figure out what children are being picked up by what siblings. There must have been today, I mean, I didn't, I did not pick up my grandson today, but there must have been twenty-five to thirty children either hanging on the side of the building, running on the playground, jumping off the steps again when I drove by.
Well, just today, I met with, um, the crossing guard and she, and I said, you can give me names, because most of the kids they know, or, you know, they've known before. She actually gave me three names, so I immediately emailed, um, Jim, the assistant principal, and he already emailed me back and, you know, to say that he would call those students down tomorrow morning so that they know that what they're doing is being seen and is being reported. So, um, we are addressing it, but I will, I will revisit the duty schedule to see whatever we can do to take note of it.
It was an issue at Bingham. I would get there, I kids and there were twenty kids at the block, and not only was it a safety issue what they were doing, but it was so disruptive to the classes with the windows open, they were still down.
Right.
It's just a story.
But I'll check that again.
So can we, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll be there, Melissa.
Motion to all of paper?
Aye.